Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Hello, everyone. We're going to start with NERDA tonight. So we'll open, call to order the NERDA Advisory Board to order for May 3, 2023. We'll open up with public comments for NERDA. Is any public comment about NERDA that's not on the agenda? Okay, on the agenda is approval of minutes from October 19, 2022. We're going to table that. And then administrative report, we have Gary here to walk us through this.
Good evening. We just wanted to start off with the, on the administrative report, we want to go over the overview of the transition from the time that I came on board. The first thing we had to start out with was the, all the bank accounts at Rockland Trust have been changed to reflect that Gary Roberts, the administrator, is the signatory on all accounts. I've been in contact with the Mass DOT and set up the necessary accounts and logins for the Grants Plus and East Tip programs that provide all the funding for the Transit Authority through the state. And along with that, I set up myself as the administrator for the Regional Transit Authority. I now have the authority to handle the financial matters concerning the transit entity and all reports to the state have now been made current as they were a little bit behind between the lag between when Paula left and when, when I came on board. On a staffing update, we hired a new part-time position to handle the island ride transportation. All the dispatching scheduling is handled at the administrative office. And the office assistant will, is out on leave, so we had to create a position to bring another person in to try to handle that while she's out. When the assistant returns, we're looking at moving her into a larger role on handling the accounts receivables and billings, which currently I'm handling every portion of the billing, accounts receivable, grants. And it does take up a lot of time just to enter the items in the QuickBooks and payroll. So I think we're, I'm looking at transitioning her into a larger role into handling that. So there's more time left for planning and other grants that we're trying to explore. The largest item that I've been working on since I came on in February is the status of the fleet. I did an inspection of the fleet, quickly looked over availability issues. There's, there's been an issue with the amount of vehicles available to perform service every day, even during the off-season. So there were concerns with, with the season upon us that these vehicles had to be made ready. So I, I had a conversation with DATCO, who is the manufacturer or the, the dealer for the buses that are here on the island. They were purchased many years ago and are at the end of their life. And I brought in a couple of people to take a look to confirm my thoughts on it. And we decided that there was some major work that needed to be accomplished to the vehicles. So I worked with the Mass DOT to work on some funding issues, to bring in outside help to come do work on the vehicles and full inspections and to, to give a full overview of what they feel the fleet is at, at this point in time. So currently there's a couple of staff here from off-island. They've been working on the vehicles every day. And they'll be here for two weeks to, to get work done. So a complete review of the past maintenance has been accomplished. And looking at the preventative maintenance plan that is in place. And there's going to be a new preventative maintenance plan, put it in place going forward, and that's going to be instituted when the staff completes their repairs to the vehicles. And we're going to start from a clean slate to get vehicles to be prepared to go out every day. On capital projects, looking around, there was a, there was a finding back in 2019 for surveillance cameras that are at the maintenance facility for the the money counting room and the state requires that there's a 30-day, it has to hold the video for 30 days. When I, I looked into it some more and found that the camera system wasn't working at all. So I started to look further into some of the, all the assets that are at the site out there at the current time and found that there are, there are things that need to be upgraded. So I worked with the Mass DOT to move some funding that was moved to fiscal year 24. And we pulled it back into fiscal year 23 to get these projects completed that need to be done and, and to make this, the system work more efficiently and safer. So one of the, the list that I provided to you is we're going to replace the camera system at the facility. It's going to monitor the money counting room, the inner, inside the office, the maintenance areas outside the facility. And it'll, it'll be able to handle the 30-day required time at a minimum. It can, it'll be able to handle that. I'm also installing door access control systems to the building that'll monitor the comings and goings of employees to better secure the facility. There'll be no more keys for the building. It'll all be on a key card system. And it'll track people coming and going outside of the, the building along with the camera system that, that'll help monitor the safety of the building and the equipment there. Island Ride Paratransit booking software that is in place currently right now is, it's outdated and it's, it's about to sunset in about a year or two years. So I work with the state to upgrade our system to be able to have a more modern approach to it with tablets that'll be able to send out the, the, the bookings straight to the driver. You can tell them when the person's ready to be picked up. It'll have the ability to call the, the riders to say that the van's on the way. The cutback on people calling the office to say, what time is my van coming? They'll, they'll get an automatic message the night before. And like Uber Eats to say that your food will be here in five minutes or seven minutes to pick the person up. Along with the software, I included into it software that has the ability to do microtransit, which is something that I'm interested in in the off-season or in some areas of the community that do not have transportation available to them because they're not on the route that currently we serve.
Gary, I just got to interrupt you. Matt has been, and others have been asking to, to look into that for years. So it's music to our ears.
Yeah, yeah, it's, and, and we've got ridership numbers. And, and, and so the question I would have is what you've probably looked at is do you do microtransit? Is that the same cost or cheaper than running fixed routes when we have, you know, like less than a hundred people on a lot of the days in the winter?
Well, in my experience, you know, microtransit, we, for my former company, we brought it into underperforming routes that, you know, if you're looking at a route that just travels from point A to point B, but people might be slightly outside of that. You can serve the people that are there, but not continue to operate these specific times at all times. You know, you, it's a demand when, when you're needed. You may need fixed route during workers' hours, going to work, returning from work, but do they need to run until 10 o'clock at night? You know, we'll have to look and see, but it's a start to have the ability to do it by putting in this software that's going to improve the island ride service. It has the ability to expand from there. So further, you know, we're going to look at it some more and see it, it's a bonus. Even if you look at Maticat, there, there are people that call in and say that I'm out of Maticat and how can we do, we don't have any service. Well, there might not be the, the demand to, to operate the service year round, but there might be 10, 10 people that need the ride and you can send the vehicle out, but they book it online. It sends it to the tablet. They go pick the person up. And it's dealt with and they get the ride that they need. And then the vehicles go to where else they could be used. So, you know, it's an exciting thing that, that has worked in several areas and rural areas that don't, that don't have ridership for, you know, a fixed route on, on a certain point. And this gives us the ability to, to look at it in the future by purchasing the software now. One of the, the major concerns that I had was the ability to purchase new vehicles at this time. It's, it's a daunting task with the lead times to get vehicles. I approached the state and asked them for some funding to, to purchase what was available that I could get my hands on. And so we did get the funding to purchase four new 14-passenger vehicles that have bike racks on them and they'll have the stop requests and destination signs. And it'll add to the fleet to ensure that all the routes are completed and run all the time. It, it just adds to the fleet that we have here now, but backup. And also to provide the possibility for microtransit in the off-season or when you don't need the larger vehicles to run in the off-season, you can run the smaller vehicles as well. One of the items that was identified was repairs to the vehicles that are currently in the feet, in the fleet now. There was a need to, to do a lot of work to get the vehicles ready for the season. So the funding was provided to bring in the outside staff to do the work. So that's what the, the two weeks right now is the, the the push to get the vehicles repaired, the funding's in place for the parts and the labor to get the work done. So that was a big boost for the Transit Authority to be able to get that. We're also looking at, there was funding provided for vehicle washing. Currently, the, I would say what is out there now is not adequate to keep the vehicles clean. We're going to look at what we can do with the money for now to, to at least get something better there to, to provide clean vehicles. The, you know, one of the things is the vehicle is the face of the island, the names on the vehicle. You need to have a clean vehicle out there. And that's one of the things I've been pushing that the vehicles need to be cleaned. They need to run right. They need to be clean. They need heat. They need air conditioning. That's what the passengers care about, along with the vehicle has to be there on time. So these are all steps to improve the operation. And, you know, I think it's going to, the, the funding that was provided, I hope is going to go a long way. I did attach documents that were sent to everyone for the ridership. It gives us numbers for each route. It breaks down the ridership from July 1 to current to show that, you know, July and August are the heaviest traveled routes and then it slowly drops down, but it does show the ridership. So you, if you had any interest to see where the ridership numbers are at, you, you have it to take a look at. So on the, on the low no grant, I want to give you an update that the Mass DOT stepped in and awarded a contract through the FTA to purchase new vehicles in fiscal year 22. Things sometimes take longer than you expect. It did move to the point that they, the decision was made by NRTA prior to my arrival to go with propane-powered vehicles through the low emission side of the low no grant. So you have two, two different sides of a low no grant. You can have low emissions or no emissions. They decided to go with the low emissions on the grant. There was a lot of work done to get the RFP out by the state. The state, the RFP was issued. Unfortunately, in February, we found out that no one bid, no manufacturer decided to bid to build buses. So it's, it's at a little bit of a stalemate right now that we're, we're discussing with Mass DOT to see the next steps, whether or not to put it back out. We can put it back out. And if nobody bids again, the hope is that the FTA will allow it to switch to a no emissions part of the grant. We can look at electric buses. We can look at other types of vehicles to go along with that.
So a question about that. What I'm hearing you say is we've got to try again before they'll allow us to shift it to battery. If we try again, what if we don't want propane? Are we stuck then? If we get a bidder?
Well, there were, there were questions that there were, there were options that I could have gone. I could have looked at hybrid diesel-electric hybrid buses. The problem with the product that's out there now is to get a diesel-electric hybrid bus, you're looking at a 30-foot bus 102 inches wide. You know, you're looking at the airport route, Sconsett Route, Pulpus maybe could run the buses. You could not run a bus that size in town. So there was concern about if we put it back out, would the FTA come back and say, well, I'm sorry, nobody bid on it? But the, our thoughts on it are if it goes back out and nobody bids, then they'll allow us to transition to an electric-powered vehicle. I, I would be surprised. I mean, the bid was out there. Not one company stepped forward to, to bid on it. I think it's, it, it's a very small number of vehicles that are doing the type of vehicle that we were looking for. I mean, there were specific sizes of vehicles of ridership numbers or should I say, the amount of people that it could carry, the capacity of the fuel to do it. You need, you would need tanks large enough to handle the propane. Electric has its drawbacks as well. You know, there's infrastructure costs. There's, how long can the vehicle run on a charge? We did bring a vehicle over for Daffodil. I drove the bus all day Saturday. We tested it. It was a very good feedback from the people that rode the bus. It's quiet. There's no noise. So I, you know, there, there's a lot of things that go into electric. You don't, you can't just jump into it and think that it's going to be up and running. But the grant is there. It's easier when the grant's there than trying to get the grant. So it is available and we're going to, you know, pursue it the best we can.
And Jason, yeah, I've, I've read in a couple of articles that there's more money available for no emissions than for low emissions. And there's, you know, but some people on both sides complaining one way or the other about it, but it's, it sounds to me like that, you know, they're, they're pushing. It sounds like the money that's the, the federal government has is trying to push the no emissions. And I think the neighbors, especially in the tight streets in town have been asking for electric buses for years because they're tired of the rattling and the noise that they deal with. You know, and sort of the engine noise all summer long. So if we eventually could replace the ones doing those tight routes downtown, I think we would make a lot of happy neighbors that, that have been coming here and complaining for years. So.
And I think you, we haven't talked about it extensively with this particular five-man board, but I think this, this board would be would support, you know, full-on electric. And if, if infrastructure has to, we might have to find funding through future town meetings. I think, I think this is just me kind of guessing that the, the voters and the board would approve that if, if needed, if you couldn't get it all through grants and because people have been asking for years, way before I got on this board, I was hearing people asking about that. At least maybe if it's half, if it's maybe the shorter route. So are we build up to it over, you know,
It wasn't ready.
Three or five years.
Yeah, in my opinion, it wasn't ready necessarily 10 or 15 years ago. They're getting a lot closer now. And I think that you save money on the maintenance. You pay more upfront. They're, they're going to be more expensive, but I think you save money on the maintenance and it comes out, you know, you'll come out better in the end, but that's something for you to, you know, so to research and make sure it works for us. But I think, you know, I think it would be popular, especially again downtown where it's, you know, they're dealing with the diesel buses in their windows all summer. So.
Well, it looks like, it sounds like you just started a pilot project this past Saturday. So.
It went very well. I mean, it was a smaller vehicle. It held 18 people. But it, it went very well. I think the, the reaction I got was, was excellent from the people that rode in the bus. It was a low-floor vehicle. There were no steps for, for passengers to get on. It had a large door to get them in, get them out quick and move on. Yes, funding has all been pushed towards electric vehicles. There's lots of funding. There's lots of funding for infrastructure. One of the drawbacks to all the funding is you need to have a fleet transition plan in place to get a lot of the grants that are up there. The state is working with every RTA to get the transition plan in place. And we've gone through phase one. We're working on through phase two at this time. It, there's just planning that has to be done to see how long a vehicle can last. If charges could be put at the greenhouse while vehicles are sitting, they can recharge. There's just a lot that goes into it, but I, I think that it, it would be a perfect fit for the island, the noise, the narrow roads. The low floor of the vehicles that are out there. You know, you, you really don't want people having to climb up flights of steps to get in. You're waiting behind buses for them to get off so other people can get on and there's steps to it, but I think it's, it's exciting to think that, to bring something here that the, the public would really like, or the homeowners that have to live along the routes that these buses are currently traveling. So I just wanted to move on that we, I presented a FY24 budget draft. We'll have to schedule a time to, to look over the, the budget to, the, the state is still working on some of the funding aspects of it, but we put together a number that I think is something that we could work off of to, to get that approved. And along with that, the FY24 revenue anticipation note, the paperwork's all been submitted. We have to do the purchase of the new note and then the buy-off of the previous year's note. I think it was 18, 1.85 million to pay off. So that, that process has started. I'll need to have, Jason, I believe you, I, I need to sign off between May 3, May 11, somewhere around that point, or someone to, to sign off on the, the sale of the note. So it's going to go out to bid. The, the one thing I will warn that the, the rate has increased significantly. It was, I think, close to 1%, and I think some of the numbers are coming back close to 4% is the, the interest on the, the note. So that is included in the budget to show the, the increased cost just to pay off the note. So if there's any other business or if anyone had any other questions?
Thank you, Gary. Everything you're saying is, is exciting. And you've done a lot, a lot of work and a lot of research, a lot of changes in a short amount of time. Anyone else? Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, I look forward to July and August. I can always, buses are right down my street. Shake the windows. I'm looking forward to a quiet summer someday.
I can't promise this year, so you'll have a built-in alarm clock by you now. Thank you.
Thanks. Motion to adjourn, NERDA Advisory Board?
So moved.
Second.
All's favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, moving on to the Select Board meeting. We'll call to order the May 3 Select Board meeting to order. No changes to the agenda that I'm aware of, announcements?
All right, we've got a few announcements, but I want you to start with two that arose after the publication of the agenda. The first is, I really wanted to give a big thank you to the employees, the town employees who participated in an employee group trash cleanup of Milestone Road last Friday prior to Daffodil weekend. We had a lot of really good participation and want to particularly thank the organizers who included Culture and Tourism Director Sean Todd, Joyce Murphy, and Katie Cabral, the Office Manager for Town Administration. I'm sure I'm missing other people. Erica was very helpful and others who, I don't know why I said that, Kelsey, right there. Others who were really, really stepped up. It was very well received and the event was born out of some ideas that are coming from an employee morale group that we established earlier this year. So that was really great. And I also am going to take this opportunity to note that unfortunately, while the cleanup was very successful and well-received, the amount of trash found along this one road, Milestone Road, was quite disturbing. I think we all can see it. Anybody who drives down Milestone Road, there's literally no reason for there to be trash on Milestone Road if people are responsible about, responsible about securing their loads and just don't litter. It's not that hard. Secondly, I wanted to thank the Steamship Authority for its assistance in securing a boat reservation for the Sound vendor for town giving. It came up mid-last week that the Sound vendor, in fact, didn't have a boat reservation. So they were very instrumental in securing it. So we thank them very much for getting that first because that would have been a real problem. Moving on to the announcements published on the agenda, this meeting is being video and audio recorded. As we know, the 2023 Annual Town Meeting starts this Saturday, May 6th, at 8:30 at the high school. And I've been saying this, but when we say starts at 8:30, we mean it is starting at 8:30. Please don't arrive at 8:30. Please get there earlier. Check-in stations open at 7:30. The annual town election is scheduled for Tuesday, May 23rd, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the high school. We have a number of board committee and commission vacancies, and I think Erica's going to mention one that we just added today.
Thank you. We have added an additional seat for the Harbor and Shellfish Advisory Board. I realize everybody thinks, you know, knows that this is an elected board. However, there was a vacancy and pursuant to Chapter 270 of the Acts of 1979, vacancies on the Harbor and Shellfish Advisory Board shall be appointed by the Select Board for the remainder of the unexpired term. So there is one seat available for that and people can just follow the, the regular committee appointment process that's online.
Thank you, Erica. Is that it, Libby? Any opening Select Board announcements or comments? Okay, next up is the follow-up comments from prior Select Board meetings. This is from our last week, April 26. Libby and Tucker are going to walk us through some of this?
Yeah, Tucker and I have been talking about this and I think Tucker's going to take it.
Right, just on, on these, this is something we added this last year because a lot of times people will come with public comment. And sometimes we would get back to it through email, but other times it's, it was important enough to bring it back here. What we can't do is have big, long debates and discussions on the responses. I mean, I think the Select Board wants to ask a question, a clarifying question. I think that's fine. We just have to be careful not to, to vary off in these because it's not on the agenda specifically for, for a larger discussion. If that makes sense? Okay, go, Tucker.
Uh, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Tucker Holland, Housing Director. Given a good amount of public comment came up last week relative to Surfside Crossing, I was asked to respond to, on behalf of the board, to some of the questions that were posed in and amongst the, the public comment. So this is really in order, I believe, of the comments. Ms. Stockman had asked a question of how did the Select Board vote to drop the lawsuit when health, safety, and environmental concerns still exist? And we wanted to point out that the ZBA continues to have jurisdiction over enforcement of conditions concerning health, safety, and the environment as modified by the Housing Appeals Committee. Ms. Stockman had asked, what was the hurry to drop the litigation? The decision to withdraw the appeal of the hack decision to approve the project was made over a year of off-and-on discussion by the board in executive session. The timing of the, of the withdrawal was relevant to the developer's ability to proceed at risk. The need for affordable and year-round housing has become acute and the decision was made to try to include this property as part of the town's efforts. No matter when the appeal was withdrawn, there would most likely be parties that were unhappy with that decision. Ms. Stockman also asked, who drafted the joint statement, which individuals? The statement was a joint effort between the Principals of Surfside Crossing, the Planning Director, the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, myself, the Housing Director, and was reviewed and modified by the Select Board. Ms. Perry actually noted this in her comments during the public comment section last week. So then Ms. Perry had questions about after reading portions of the Select Board's 20, excuse me, February 14th, 2018 letter to Mass Housing in which the board voted 5-0 to strongly urge Mass Housing to deny a project eligibility letter for Surfside Crossing because of a variety of different concerns. What has changed since that time was the question? And several different things have changed, but among them, some of the items that were initial concerns have been addressed through the course of the process. For example, it was determined that, as I understand it, Nantucket has an adequate water supply and also has excess sewer capacity. And I guess I would add that it's important to note that the ZBA still retains authority over a number of conditions, particularly relative to safety. So after reading a portion of an email from me dated April 7, 2023 to the Select Board for their forthcoming executive session at that time, Ms. Perry stated, no one could give a definition of year-round housing. So the definition of year-round housing can vary depending on what context or rule, regulation, bylaw or law that might be referencing year-round and the associated deed restriction. So generally, it would be considered, year-round would generally be considered someone who lives on Nantucket for approximately 11 months of the year with reasonable time off the island for vacations and appointments and so forth. You, you could see restrictions that might also allow, still falling into a year-round You, you could see restrictions that might also allow, still falling into a year-round category, for some residents to live south of here for a few months of the year, but still be considered residents of Nantucket. And we can think about retirees as an example there. Ms. Perry asked, why do we have signed agreements for town employees, but no signed agreement with Surfside Crossing? So agreement with town employees and the joint statement with Surfside Crossing are different animals. And just to, I guess, correct for the record, Ms. Perry had held something up that was intended to show an employment contract for myself with the town, a multi-year agreement, I suppose, was what was implied. In fact, I have no employment contract with the town. I'm an at-will employee. Why was the zoning board of appeals brought in? Why was, excuse me, why wasn't the zoning board of appeals brought in for negotiations about dropping the lawsuit? So it was in fact intended that the ZBA would be consulted in advance of the statement being released. However, the intended executive session where this would have happened was unintentionally incorrectly posted and the meeting occurred in open session. At that point with the meetings scheduled, it was decided it would be best to proceed in open session and to be able, to be able to advise the public as soon as possible. Ms. Perry asked, what is the $6.5 million housing override going toward? Referring to Article 18 at the upcoming town meeting. So the purpose of those funds is to go toward affordable and attainable housing efforts and achieve housing goals and initiatives as identified principally in the Select Board Strategic Plan and Nantucket's 2021 Housing Production Plan. So Ms. Perry asked, why would people want to serve on boards when the Select Board usurps control from them, like with the Conservation Commission and ZBA? I'm not quite sure how to answer this. Perhaps it was meant rhetorically. There were any number of reasons people may not be willing to serve on boards, including the time commitment. And I might observe it's often a thankless job. What is the best way to get answers and information to boards like the ZBA? Through the administrative staff to those boards, sometimes those staff people are not able to respond immediately. Finally, Ms. Perry had asked, has there been any return of investment analysis on the Surfside Crossing project? I'm not entirely sure what is meant by the question. The town has not performed an ROI on this project because the town is not per se investing capital into this project. And I guess I would note that 40B comes with certain defined profit limitations which are governed by law. Um, Ms. Cabral had asked, because the fire chief is on record that the development is unsafe, how will the Select Board ensure the safety issues of the fire department are considered and addressed? So my understanding is that is not consistent with the former fire chief's testimony in the Housing Appeal Committee proceedings. But again, I guess I would underscore that the ZBA continues to have jurisdiction over low, local safety concerns as modified by the Housing Appeals Committee decision. Finally, uh, Emily Molden had asked, she had asked the Select Board to explain to the community why the ZBA was undermined. There was no intent to undermine the ZBA. Ultimately, the Select Board is the executive authority responsible for litigation decisions. Ms. Molden asked, why was town council not involved in negotiations as revealed in the 419, 2023 ZBA meeting, especially since the ZBA will be responsible for enforcing the permit with issues that have not been resolved? Neither party had counsel present for the discussions with the developer. Why did three members of this Select Board vote to move forward with withdrawing the lawsuit with no guarantee of any benefit to the town or the community? So there's a misconception that there was all kinds of leverage associated with the appeal. Based on the history of municipal appeals of 40B decisions by the Housing Appeals Committee, it was believed that any potential benefit from continuing the appeal was outweighed by the potential benefit from having a seat at the table as the developers determine how to achieve their stated goal of 75% of the project being deed restricted to serve year-rounders. The filing of the plans at the ZBA to proceed at risk could arg- could arguably mark the end of any real leverage. Ms. Perry's reading into the record last week of my memo to the Select Board on April 7th illustrated this understanding.
Thank you, Tucker. Any follow-up questions or clarifying questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm, I wish Tucker wasn't, uh, the face of this. I believe, as I said in executive session, I believe this has a chance of hurting housing because we didn't include our partners and because we didn't, uh, you know, we didn't include the zoning board and I think our process was a little too quick. Uh, and I wish that Tucker wasn't the face of this because this is going to stick to housing. And so I, I just, you know, I said that in executive session, I'll repeat it now, that, uh, you know, we are making a mistake by tying this to housing so tightly. You know, I hope that by doing this, that we end up with all the things that we've been promised. You know, there's no guarantee, but I hope that we do. And then I can sit here and say I'm wrong and, you know, I was wrong. But, you know, I just, I'm, I'm uneasy having him answer questions that are not, you know, anyway.
So is there any clarifying questions for what he said?
Well, I'm just clarifying. I wish it wasn't this way.
Okay, that's not what I asked, but, okay. Let's move on to public comment. The, the items that are on the agenda? Yeah, we're, we're moving on to public comment on things that aren't on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go ahead. Yeah, yeah. And that, that doesn't include Surfside Crossing or anything like that. That, that is, uh, was just a comments from last.
Thank you for letting me speak. Paco Mo parking lot, last couple of years with the construction that's going on, there's an erosion problem and a, um, uh, it's created a shortage of parking. I've talked with Jeff Carlson. I just wanted to let you guys know that, uh, he's on the job and, uh, working on it. And I wish the town good luck and I wanted to thank you guys for doing that and, uh, hope for the best because if it, if something doesn't happen, uh, as you guys know, the Paco Mo parking lot is pretty crowded as it was before. Now with the shortage of parking, which is probably about 50% after the erosion and the guy who, uh, put up some big boulders alongside of the road is probably cut it in half. So there'll probably be a lot of unhappy beachgoers when they won't be able to get into the parking lot. But hopefully the town will, will prevail and, and the Paco Mo point will be assessed. Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot to, uh, ask or to remind everybody, after we, we talked to John Giorgio last week about public comment, recommendation was that everybody gets three minutes. Nobody exceeds three minutes. So sometimes you have more to say than three minutes. So I would say that if you have multiple topics, I'll, I'll stop, ask you to stop at three minutes and then let somebody else come up. And if you had another topic to come up. So we're, we're, because we're, the issue is, so last week I let everybody go a little longer. And then, uh, Giorgio said, well, problem is if you stop somebody else in three minutes, let somebody else go five, then it gets tricky. So we're going to, we're just going to keep it at three minutes for everybody. I forgot to say at the beginning.
Are you timing? Do you want me to time?
I'm timing. I got a little Google timer right here.
Perfect.
Uh, thank you Chairman Bridges, uh, and the board and, uh, staff. Also, Jason, I just want to special thank you to you. I think you have a few more meetings left. And, uh, I just appreciate all the, um, open conversations and ability that you've had to be able to talk to and, you know, give back feedback. It's, you know, it doesn't always happen, um, perfectly, but you make, always made a great effort and I want to appreciate that and acknowledge it. And, okay, so at a public comment in the past, I, um, brought up, uh, a shark policy, um, as I witnessed some uh, some stuff that happened to beach that wasn't quite in the policy. And I asked to maybe have a public meeting to, uh, go over the, the shark policy because it seems like right now it's just all sharks are bad. And it doesn't seem like that's a, the greatest policy with trying to have a, a blue economy and attracting people to the beaches. Uh, and, and, um, I appreciated, um, the Harbor Masters, um, response to my public comment. I just wanted to have a, an actual open meeting where we could have a exchange of ideas. And then the same thing with the siren, um, that we had a tornado, was it last summer or was it two summers ago? And the sirens didn't go off and I asked at public comment and you had the chief come in, um, to respond to that. And the chief explained the situation, think pretty thoroughly. But my takeaway was that there was only two people that are allowed to, um, activate the siren was the emergency manager and the chief. And it left a lot of questions, like if they're not here, um, you know, who's, if, is there some emergency? Does someone allow to ring the sirens? Uh, and then like, I know there's a policy sheet on what to do, but it seems like the siren system, like there should be some, a siren different for, it's a tsunami than a fire and a tornado. And I didn't see that addressed in there. So I think a public meeting with the addressing, um, addressing the siren situation would be a good thing. And then, um, finally, I'd like to support Megan, um, Perry's, um, position that we should have a public meeting about how the comprehensive management permit fiasco played out and what changes and what, um, staff and, um, board members have decided, um, we should go forward. I know that there's been a lot of comments made at the meetings here, but I think a public, um, meeting would be in order. So, uh, I hope I made it in three minutes. I had a lot of discussing. Thanks again.
Thanks for two minutes, 27 seconds. Nice job. And I'm sorry that we had the time that it's.
Thank you, Jason, Megan Perry. I'll try to be as quick as I possibly can. I know I was 10 minutes last week, so my apologies. I was just looking through a couple of timelines online for the, um, dismissal and, uh, meetings that occurred and when they occurred. So, um, I guess I'll start with this. So April 7th, Affordable Housing Trust had an executive meeting at 10:30 AM. Um, I'm guessing this is where the unanimous vote was taken to authorize Tucker, Brian and Andrew to negotiate the deal with Surfside Crossing. There was an email sent out April 7th, um, from Tucker at 2:54 PM. Um, subject was in reference to the Select Board packet. Um, and then at 3:53, there was an email to Erica, um, regarding the, the write-up for that. And that just seemed like a very quick timeframe to come up with this non-agreement or whatever it's called. I don't even know at this point. Um, then, uh, fast forwarding a little bit. So that was April 7th, April 13th, the Select Board Executive Session Meeting Minutes, which I got off of the town's website. It says that Dawn, um, Matt, Malcolm and Brooke were present. Jason was not present. It says approved on April 26, 2023. No documents were used. So I, I'm just curious how that, there was possibly a three to two vote when there was only four people stated as being there on, on those meeting minutes. Um, and then April 19th, the ZBA meeting, um, ZBA was never notified. I'm a little confused how town council was representing the Select Board, but representing the ZBA all at the same time with differing views. Um, he kept citing that due to a current attorney client privilege, he couldn't really answer a lot of the ZBA's questions. So that was a little confusing to me. Is he representing the ZBA in that instance? Is he representing the Select Board in that instance? It was, um, a very squiggly line to have to walk down, um, for sure. So I, I know that was some of the questions that some of those board members had. Um, and then, uh, they had, the ZBA had sent an email. I guess they had town council send an email to town administration asking to not dismiss the appeal on April 19th. That was sent on April 20th, the Select Board decided to file a motion to dismiss. So town council had told the ZBA they couldn't hold an executive session because there had been a dismissal. And in fact, there actually hadn't been a dismissal. So I'm not sure what advice he was giving the ZBA because he said there was a dismissal, but there wasn't a dismissal filed yet. Um, and I'm not quite sure if the Select Board decided to rush through that so that the ZBA couldn't hold an executive session to discuss this further. Um, it's just, I, I'm trying to understand the timeline based on the public documents that are posted. And maybe you guys can help on me understand that. Um, because looking at the timeline, I can understand why the air mail, air mail article came out with the comments that it did come out with over the weekend. Um, so, uh, that I think is under three minutes and those are my timeline questions. And, um, I don't know, maybe next time I can get the extra two minutes that we talked about instead of 12, it was 10, but thank you.
Is there any other public comment here? Items that are not on the agenda? Mr. Tucker?
Unrelated to prior topics. Uh, I simply would like to, uh, under here announce, um, that the RFP for the properties at 135 and 137 Orange Street, uh, has been issued by the procurement department. I want to thank Brian Turmit and his, uh, team for, um, publishing that, getting it out there. You go to the town website to register for it under the procurement section. And you will see when you look at the opening page of that document, there's an upcoming, um, site visit and opportunity to ask questions of, uh, relevant department heads relative to the project coming up on May 31st. So I just wanted to put that on folks radar. Thank you.
Thank you, Tucker. Any other comment, couple of comment here tonight? Okay, we'll move on. There's no new business that I know of. Uh, I get a motion for approval of minutes for April 26th.
So moved.
Uh, I was trying to get, trying to get them all in. One motion for approval of the minutes, payroll warrants and treasury warrants.
Motion to approve all three. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Dawn. You're on top of it. Town managers report.
Thank you. We have an update on our PFAS, um, assessment project and I think we've got some people online. Um, Greg, are you going to introduce it?
Sure.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, Greg, given assistant town manager. Uh, this is about the, I think, fifth update that we've done to the Select Board on the town's voluntary PFAS assessment efforts, um, since 2020. Um, I like to stress that these, uh, the work that we are doing is not under any sort of state order or any requirement. These are the, these are efforts that we are voluntarily doing in order to get ahead and better understand PFAS and the PFAS cycle on the island. Um, with us tonight, we have Chuck Larson, who is the Town Strategic Project Manager, as well as Andy Miller, who's our, uh, consultant project manager from CDM Smith for these projects. We may have Eric Sparge, uh, Sparge Mano, Sparge Mano. I'm not sure if he's on today from C, uh, CDM Smith. Um, unfortunately, our new environmental contaminant specialist, Michael Maynard, could not make the meeting tonight. But that is a position that has been developed specifically from our efforts regarding PFAS, um, within the Public Health, um, office. So you have an AIS in front of you that explains what we've been doing since the last update, last quarter. And I think I'll just jump right in unless, um, Chuck Larson has any comments. Um, maybe we'll leave it right up to Andy Miller from CDM Smith to give a presentation.
Sure. Any, anything, Chuck, or should I go ahead?
Please go ahead.
Okay, all right. Uh, thanks. Thank you, Greg. So we have that slideshow with.
Yep.
Do you want me to share or are you planning on it?
Oh, if you can share, that would be great.
All right, give me one sec.
And anyone from the public, uh, has questions or comments, we'll, we'll wait till the end and we'll, we'll be, um, time for that.
Okay, good. Um, so anyway, thank you for having us here. We wanted to provide an update for you on the, um, PFAS work we have been doing on the. Okay, good. So anyway, thank you for having us here. We wanted to provide an update for you on the PFAS work we have been doing on the island. It's been two and a half years. So it's been a while now. We've accomplished a lot and we have a lot of ongoing new initiative planned. So we can move on to the next slide. As far as agenda, what we wanted to touch upon today, an update on the assessment project. And that's where we started initially with the phase one and phase two work. And then since then, we've moved on to a number of different initiatives that are in various stages, either in progress or progressing. So I'd like to go over those. The, we held a recent PFAS summit, the water system expansion project, protocols for town workers, the wastewater component of the PFAS and some anticipated sampling at the landfill. And we'll touch upon the ongoing and continued public outreach that we've been doing with the town. I think we go to the next slide. And we can, yeah, that's great. We can start here. So you have all, I believe, seen this before. If you recall this slide, this is the PFAS cycle unique to Nantucket that was developed at the start of our work, two and a half years ago, that initial report during the assessment. It basically shows the flow-through profit process of PFAS on the island from sources to where it ends up ultimately in the groundwater or surface water, plants, wildlife and such. And then eventually into the drinking water or food for human exposure. And the critical thing here, as I've said in the past, it's, it's these flow pathways, whether they're environmental or whether they're man-made transport mechanisms. But those are the means that by which PFAS is moving from consumer products by all of us into the environment via the septic collection system or septic systems, solid waste to the landfill and such. And of course, the other item we have is PFAS from firefighting foam used at the airport in the past, which is, I think, what began the awareness of this concern on the island. Our goal, I think we can move on, our goal is to work to reduce the sources and to break that cycle. We can go on, that's okay. Next slide, great. And so that gets to the objectives here that are outlined in both the short-term and long-term objectives. Short-term, that initial focus was identifying key potential and known PFAS sources and receptors. And our focus, of course, was municipal facilities. And then to initiate a planning approach and how to address these to achieve eventually source control and reduction. Long-term, obviously, our goal is to protect drinking water sources, maintaining compliance with state and federal regulations and, and, and standards and such regarding PFAS are ever evolving and changing. And, and the importance of protecting community well-being and health and promoting good health for naturals and ecological resources. I just, the graphic up in the top right-hand corner is just a representation of the original report that we submitted. And then I think the circle down below, a strategy, the strategy of phased approach is important to touch upon because that identifies the short-term interim and long-term strategies I just talked about. So the short-term was, you know, working to protect, identify and protect receptors. The interim strategy is working towards source reduction where we can. And long-term, the idea is to break the cycle to result in ultimate reduction or elimination of PFAS if we can get there. Next slide. So this is a slide that I've presented in the past and we've updated. This ties to the original assessment program that we did, identifies those tasks and where we are with them. We performed some original site visit and facility reviews to confirm our understanding of potential sources on the island. At the landfill, we had submitted a work plan for groundwater and surface water sampling of PFAS from existing wells that was submitted to DEP at their request once PFAS was known to be present in the co-compost wastewater treatment facility. We have initiated a sampling program of the influent and within the collection system. I'll touch upon that a little bit more detail in a few minutes, but that's in process. We did complete a report on potential destruction technologies of PFAS and sludge. That's Dawn. Waste options Nantucket is continuing orderly sampling of PFAS in the co-compost, which is a mask DEP requirement. We also performed a facility review of fire department facilities on the island and provided recommendations regarding that. That was a technical memo that was completed last year. And of course, we have that PFAS cycle and potential sources, which we continue to think about on a regular basis and update it as new information becomes available. And finally, not least of which is the public outreach and planning communication process, which continues. Next slide. So now I want to touch upon some of the new initiatives that have been progressing since that initial phased report. And we'll start with this, the PFAS summit, which was initiated by the town and management office on the island. It was held on February 7th. And it brought together a number of individuals from all your departments within the town, administration, water, sewer, DPW, health, procurement and the airport. There were representatives there from the select board, the finance committee, your solid waste advisory committee, waste options Nantucket had representation there. Commonwealth Resource Management Corporation had represented there. I see that George is on the phone today. And of course, CDM Smith was there. And the purpose of this organization, of this meeting, which Greg and Chuck organized and facilitated was really to increase communication, but also touch upon what each department was doing, what our project was, what was happening at the landfill, at the wastewater treatment plant. So it was really an exchange of information to ensure future coordination of efforts to best, to the best advantage of Nantucket long-term relative to controlling or reducing PFAS over time. And we came up with a lot of several outcomes, specific tasks, things to move forward with, and we'll just run through those. One item that was discussed at the meeting was to address how to deal with soil management in support of the anticipated water main construction near the airport. So we came up with some tentative solutions for that. We talked about the wastewater sampling efforts that are continuing to support source identification out in the collection system. We touched upon the technology evaluation with an intent of pursuing some bench scale study, which I'll talk about in a moment. We've talked about the landfill groundwater and surface water PFAS sampling, which had not yet been initiated, but a decision was made to push that forward. And again, the communication piece primarily between landfill operations and the wastewater treatment facility to ensure everything is in sync over time. And I believe the intent is to have a follow-up meeting of the same group in the fall where we can discuss progress on each of these initiatives. Next slide. So here I'm going to present a, I think I have four or five slides of different initiatives ongoing that I want to touch upon. This one first, we've talked about it before. I've been in front of you before, CDM Smith representatives have certainly regarding the water system expansion project west of the airport. The goal here being to provide public water to residents whose domestic wells have been impacted by PFAS in that area. As you know, we had done some modeling to size the pipes and capacity system pressures and everything else to push us forward with design. And at this point, if you look in the graphic at the bottom of the page, there are, there are six steps outlined. And steps one, two and three are complete. So the design and the permitting is complete. The SRF money, it's a zero percent interest loan is nearly put in place. We're just about set with that. We're about to go out to bid. And that's really pending at this point, a town meeting decision where we are seeking approval for the taking of easements along some of those private roads. So that's a, an important turning point for this project because those easements will allow water main construction in this entire area that we have, I, you know, have been working on relative to the design and use of the SRF funding. Intent then is to proceed with bidding and construction will occur starting in the fall of 2023 and extend to the next spring to ensure any paving requirements and such. And next slide. Handling and management of PFAS impacted materials. This is a project that we started oh, about eight months ago. It's actually nearly complete. We're going to be handing some draft documents over to Greg and Chuck shortly. The idea here is the town wanted to ensure protection for employees when they were working in areas of known or suspected PFAS contamination during utility work such as water main repairs, catch basin cleaning, stormwater repairs, things of those nature. And also how to address the handling and management of any impacted materials that might be removed from the ground in those processes. So it's really applicable to the DPW, the sewer department and water department employees. And our focus has been how to deal with soil material management, catch basin cleanings and groundwater and stormwater that might be impacted. So what we've done is we've actually developed two protocols, which will be provided to the town and available to employees. Those protocols are going to include a flow chart. You can see that over at the right. Just, you're not going to be able to read it, but the idea is just to get a sense of what these look like. And so there's a specific pathways of decisions or actions needed, you know, when working in these particular areas. And once these are complete and accepted by the town, we will then be available to provide training to your staff and how to make use of these. They're not long documents and they're written to be easily read and implemented. Next, please. Okay, wastewater sampling. So this is an important one. And this has been going on for almost a year. The idea here was to initiate collection of wastewater samples to analyze for PFAS and understand better what's entering the treatment plant. So it includes sampling of influent to the surf side treatment plant, sampling at Sias Conset, several samples collected out in the collection system at pump stations. Also, collection of samples at the landfill of the landfill leachate and also from septic collar trucks and such that come into the facility. Again, the idea here is to try to understand what the sources are. Once you understand sources, then you can better assess how to control them or minimize their impact over time. The sampling so far, the, the first year of work has included four sets of sample based upon seasonal flow variations on the island based upon your flows recorded at the surf side wastewater treatment plant. And you see the circles there represent the time periods that we collected samples last August, October and November and in April, actually just last week. So we don't have that most recent data in. The pictures on the right just show some of the sampling locations, the leachate tanks at the landfill, manual sampling up at the top and a sampler at the treatment plant. Next slide. So how are we using this data? Well, we as engineers love graphs. So we collect this data and we're plotting it and we're looking at it. We have three sets of data so far. That's what that graph is at the top right-hand corner. It, you know, identifies the concentrations of PFAS at various samples. But we're not just looking at the sample results themselves. We also want to think about loading to the wastewater treatment plant. And by that, just for the sake of example, if one septic collar comes in that has a lot, lot of PFAS in it, let's say, that's only one septic collar over the course of a year compared to what's flowing in perhaps with PFAS from the collection system on a near constant basis. So we want to look at, do some calculations to look at those loads because that may be what's more critical than even individual haulers coming in or whatever. So those are just an example of the types of things we're looking at. We're not really there yet because the sampling program is still in process. So we're assessing that data. And as it comes in, we're analyzing it. We anticipate a report after the fourth set of data. It comes back from the lab probably in July. And then the report will come out thereafter. And the idea is to build a database and then tweak the program, expand it if necessary and try to ensure capturing of sufficient samples to identify sources. Now, the other advantage of doing this is it's given us a hint perhaps of where we might be able to go, where the town might be able to go with technology in terms of PFAS reduction over time. And that's the bullet there that says technology evaluation. The data suggesting the potential viability of what we call foam fractionation. And basically, for instance, the wastewater treatment facility, part of that process aeration tank foam is generated by aeration. And sometimes there is potential for PFAS to kind of collect in that foam and be segregated from other parts of the sewer flow i- in the facility. So we want to kind of assess that further and see if there's a potential means of treating it, destroying it, what have you. And it might be a viable method of getting some of the PFAS out of the wastewater. So that is in its infancy. We have suggested to the town, a bench scale study might be appropriate of that. A similar one for the landfill leachate. And then, as I said, a bench scale study is just a desktop study. So, you know, these are, you know, inexpensive efforts on a relative basis to come in and work within the facility at a lab bench. But if they're positive, then you would get into a potential pilot program in the future, which is obviously a bit more costly and requires substantial equipment and things of that nature. So that effort will be progressing hopefully this summer into the fall. Next. Here, just to quickly touch upon the potential sampling of groundwater and surface water at the landfill. I mentioned this earlier. This was an outgrowth of the PFAS summit discussions regarding the landfill. The idea here is to sample to better understand potential impacts to the environment of PFAS. And it was also identified as this understanding or the, knowing the presence of PFAS in the groundwater, if it's there, might help in decision-making process regarding landfill closure approaches. I should also mention that Mast DEP originally suggested the need for sampling based upon the presence of PFAS in the co-compost. And that's why we had developed the protocol for this. It's been submitted to them. They haven't responded, but I believe the town's interested in moving forward with the sampling anyway. Again, as I said, as a means of helping the closure process. The, the intent is to sample all the groundwater wells and surface water monitoring stations at the landfill. And we would anticipate the, the first year of such work would be done semi-annually. So two sample rounds, probably in early fall and then in next spring or so. Next slide. Okay. And then, of course, continued public outreach, which is we want to maintain that communication and information flow to all of you as well as the public in general. We have prepared a lot of outlet outreach documents in the past. And the town, as you all know, has a very active webpage where these are all filed and available. We're always available for these meetings and presentations. One new aspect of our public outreach that I want to touch upon, and this was actually initiated by Mike Maynard, who is now working with your health department, and that is STEM sessions to high school students. So in case you don't act familiar with STEM, STEM just refers to science, technology, engineering and math. It's a term used to capture job needs and training for people entering the workforce. So the idea here is STEM sessions to high school students regarding PFAS and the work we're doing as, as well as trying to generate career interest of those students for a future career paths. And we are hoping to do that in the fall. So I think that covers the topics and I guess questions, room for questions, Greg, however you want to handle it.
Sure. Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'll just jump in really quickly and thank Andy for putting that together because we've done quite a few projects over the past two and a half years and there's more to go. As I said, we don't really have a roadmap on what we should be doing because we, we're kind of leaders in the, in the state, quite honestly. The sessions that Libby and I and others have gone to with Mass Municipal, nobody's done what we've done. So we're trying to take the lead. nobody's done what we've done. So we're trying to take the lead and, you know, feel our way. And what's just unique is we're such a closed system that we're kind of a Petri dish. So we're happy with that. Um, according to your AI, I also want to point out that Mike um, Maynard, you know, he's our new environmental contaminant specialist with Public Health. He also organized a private well testing workshop this past um, April twenty-sixth. Um, it was for local residents as well as public health and engineering professionals. Um, and they, this was very well attended. It was sponsored by Recap Solutions and they, I think he said they had something like forty-seven participants, which is, which is really good. Um, and to also expand upon the STEM um, project, Michael is really trying to engage the local youth um, as part of also a DEI initiative to get more um, excited about science, math and, you know, technology, math, everything else. And um, we may be building this around uh, future efforts with our PFAS projects. Um, and that's really all I have unless Chuck has anything to offer or the board or public has any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions in the board? Comments before we go to the public?
Yeah, just a question and comment. Uh, I think it was sort of when you look into it, PFAS is everywhere. It's in, it's in aluminum cans, it's in the pa- paper containers, takeout containers, plastic bottles, canned food, shampoo. It's like, it's ubiquitous. And the issues that then they change and they say, okay, we're not gonna use it anymore. But sometimes what they're turning to is closely related chemicals that are uh, untested and they're still allowed to use them, but we, they don't know what the uh, what the impacts of those are gonna be. And so it really is kind of a, a difficult thing. I think it's pretty easy out in the airport to say, you know, we had the firefighting foam and its impacted water quality and we've sort of, we've, we're running that down. I think it's gonna get a little harder if you think about it, when we start saying, where did it come to when it's in this sewer? Or, or it's in the, uh, it gets out to the uh, the water, you know, to the treatment plant because it's coming through people into everywhere. And so one thing I was gonna ask is, is will there be a control group? You know, when we do this, will we have a control group of individuals around the island or somehow be able to control for those factors to say, okay, it is being more impacted here from this thing, whatever it is, say the airport foam. But it's not more impacted here because it's just all the stuff you're reading from the stop and shop. You know, like I think when, whenever we do this, we may have to make sure that we've got some sort of control in it and somebody that understands that kind of science. Or, you know, because I think you're just gonna find it everywhere. And we could be doing everything, but we want to make sure that we're putting our efforts and money to what is gonna give us the most uh, most effort, you know, the most bang for our buck. So.
Thank you, Matt. Andy or Chuck? Any comments on that, Greg?
Oh, yeah, yeah, just, yeah, I think in terms of PFAS, Matt, you're referring to, you know, targeting sources and you know, we're not really at that level yet. We're more at the broad network level trying to identify what the potential heavy loaded sources are for PFAS. But certainly we'll get to that level of detail, but I think this is something that's gonna be, you know, active for decades. Because you mentioned that there are chemicals, there's current contamination, and then there's a new wave of chemicals that come out that get substituted for some of the properties that are used with PFAS. So, um, yeah, we're following a stepwise process. We have experts like Andy and his group that that are on the cutting edge of this. So um, it's frustrating. We'd like to do more faster. But uh, you know, we are, you know, working through the process and we appreciate the support and the funding to be able to do that.
Exactly.
Thank you, Chuck. You. Anybody else? Okay, we go to the public. Erica, Aisha?
Hi, thank you for, my name's Aisha Khan. Thank you for the presentation. Um, that was excellent and, uh, you know, always appreciated. Um, I had uh, two questions. Um, actually, and could I give a little uh, answer to Matt's question? That was a great question. Could I just add something to that? Question, um, Matt, when you were asking about, you know, sources of PFAS when you're testing around the island, there are some great um, chemical um, signature prints that come from a lot of the PFAS or the foam, the firefighting foam, a lot of times has signature prints that when you look at the contamination in somebody's well, you can at times find out what are some of the sources. So that might be able to help answer what you were asking, um, that, you know, is it from foam, is it from um, consumer goods, is it from textiles? There are signature prints that are associated with the PFAS chemicals that can a lot of times help kind of decipher, um, you know, where a, a potential source may be. Um, but the question that I had was um, for the meeting, the, I believe it was the um, the PFAS summit. I didn't see the fire department there and I was wondering if in the future meeting, the fall one, if you guys could, um, it would be awesome if you could include the fire department. I know that they've been very, very active. They, they've been extremely active. I worked alongside them, um, and they're pretty, pretty well versed in um, the PFAS conversation and um, they use the foam. So that was a huge source of it. Um, so I think it would be really beneficial to include them um, with the town meeting or the PFAS summit. Thank you.
Yes, Aisha. Go to Bruce Mandel.
I unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members uh, in attendance. Uh, early on in these, this process, uh, CDM Smith was active in sampling groundwater and surface water wells in various places on the island. And the folks in Matikit were particularly interested in the work uh, being done at the landfill for a couple of reasons. One, the unmined, unlined cell uh, still has a repository of decades old PFAS containing materials that were unknow- unknowingly deposited. And we feel they still contribute to uh, some PFAS uh, contribution to our groundwater and surface water. And then the uh, HWH maps clearly indicate the ground floor flow from surface water and groundwater from the landfill flows into Matikit. So we had asked to discuss this issue early on and were told, well, uh, you needed stakeholder status. So we asked to get stakeholder status and we're told, uh, oh, we'll get back to you. The study went on and on and it was being wrapped up and we had not been granted stakeholder status to provide any input particularly about the thirty existing uh, monitoring wells spread out all through Matikit that were available for testing but weren't being used. And it was through the efforts of the Matikit Conservation Association that some landfill sampling sites uh, had been covered up and we got them to be uncovered so they could be sampled. So we're pretty active and interested in this. And we were very disappointed to find out that we would never be granted under this study stakeholder status to provide any kind of public input. And we were very concerned about that. And to our consternation, we later found out despite being promised stakeholder status that it couldn't be granted because the contract with CDM Smith carefully defined stakeholders as just a handful of basically town employees. So moving forward, I'm, I'm pleased to see that there's a new initiative. Uh, I would like to ask that the uh, at least the Matikit community be granted some form of stakeholder input into this new study. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other thoughts or comments from the board? Okay, thank you for the public comments, uh, and Matt, and thank you Andy, Chuck and Greg and all the work that, that you're doing. Uh, it must be interesting to go to these meetings, uh, the state of these conferences and being uh, the leader and, and a lot of these initiatives. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, we have one more hand up. Go to Megan Perry. Oh, hands down. One second, Megan, if you were. Yeah, just see.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it. Um, I'll be super quick. I'm just wondering, are we looking at PFAS as a, a class of chemicals? Um, I was just confused. Um, because we've not really seen any studies saying that they're safe. Um, we've actually only found that they're, they're worse than suspected. So it's just, it was just a question I figured I'd ask. Um, and I, I would really appreciate these presentations and hope that um, some more community involvement and stakeholder involvement can happen with these. Um, kind of echoing what Mr. Mandel just said. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Would you like to respond, Greg?
Yeah, please, Andy.
So, you know, th- there are thousands of these compounds, I think uh, nine thousand com- compounds or so that make up the suite of PFAS. Um, and, you know, eh, we're, we're just at the infancy of really identifying those um, which might have health effects. Uh, and establishing, you know, EPA is beginning to establish drinking water standards for a very small number, right? Their draft standards recently came out and only touches upon, um, I think it's six or seven of them. Of course, Massachusetts um, uh, has been monitoring or had a standard for six in total. So, you know, if that answers it, uh, hopefully that answers the question, but it is a class of compounds uh, in, but they are being looked at individually, but with the most significant ones being upfront. Um, if I might just add, I'd like to add just one further point of clarification relative to Mr. Mandel's um, as before, just so the board and the public is aware, um, we have not done any sampling of uh, any groundwater or surface water sources as part of this project. So I just want everyone to know that. And the first time we will be doing any such sampling will be the um, landfill monitoring wells uh, out at the um, solid waste facility. So that will be the first sampling that we will have been involved in and that this project, I think, has done. Um, they shouldn't be confusing with the program that UMass and DEP did. So that may be a part of the confusion.
Thank you, Andy. Eric, can we go down the line? Aisha?
Hi, thank you. I, I had another uh, question as, as the presentation was continuing. Um, the, because this is a public health issue, um, it, I, I was wondering what kind of outreach or involvement there has been with um, between the health department and the hospital and healthcare providers. Um, because as we're discussing this, and, and there are many associated health risks, um, EPA itself has said that there is no safe level uh, for PFOA, PFOS, zero is the safe level. And there's been ongoing um, peer reviews that now are showing links to obesity and um, you know, neurological diseases way more than what was conducted in two thousand and thirteen with the, you know, the C eight study panel that or the main six diseases that we commonly refer to. Um, there's just more ongoing information and as people are finding this in their well or exposure to it or concerns and as we talk about it, um, they don't know what to do next. And I, I, I was wondering if there was any communication or contact with their healthcare providers because those are gonna be the, or the health department, those are gonna be the first people who they're gonna go to. And if we could, I don't, I don't really know what I'm asking more than, or is that, is that an angle or is that something we can look into? Um, otherwise it's, you know, it's kind of hard for a person to know what to do. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I can, I can answer Aisha's question.
Yes.
Um, Aisha, um, yes, there's been very little outreach by our work group. Um, because we're just overwhelmed with what we're doing. However, that is why we have created and hired a new position in public health to do that. If Michael was on, and Michael's fairly new, I think he's probably just finished his first three months or so. His role will be to work more from the public health angle, Board of Health, hospitals and the public in what the more, you know, eh, effects of PFAS and ingestion and so forth would be. So just get up and running. I think he may have reached out to your organization a little earlier, just introduce himself, but that's gonna be part of his role. We, we learned that as we were going through our projects that we needed this full-time position for that.
Greg, is that position just PFAS or is it part of, of something bigger?
It's part of something bigger. It was hired to look at any sort of emerging, you know, contaminant. It could be even discussing lead or something arsenic, but it really is has been like eighty percent designed on clean drinking water and, and PFAS because of that.
Okay. Thank you.
And Michael is very knowledgeable.
Okay, any other comments? We, thank you, Greg, Andy, Chuck, for all the work you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Next.
Yep.
Thank you. And I want to thank all those people too. I um, don't think we can underestimate the uh, amount of time that Greg, Chuck and um, other town employees have spent on this. It is massive. Next item under Town Manager's Report is a long-term, we got a couple items here. Um, and we have some different people here to address them. First off, long-term solid waste planning update. George Aronson is on the line here. He's going to review uh, a presentation about our update. Just want to note that town administration has been working with an internal work, work group for over two years. It includes one select board member, a finance committee member, some other staff members, um, Mr. Aronson, Town Council. And we have been discussing the development of a request for proposals um, in advance and in anticipation of the Waste Services Agreement expiring in two thousand and twenty-five. And I think we're well on our way to um, getting that prepared. There is a town meeting warrant article, uh, Article ninety-two at the coming town meeting, which is only to authorize the select board to enter into a long-term agreement. The agreement, of course, is not ready or um, you know, engaged at this point. So I would turn the presentation over to George.
Uh, thank you, Libby, and thank you to the select board. Uh, and Erica, next slide, please. My name is George Aronson, very consultant to the town on solid waste issues for a number of years. I just wanted to quickly review uh, some of the objectives for long-term solid waste planning. Uh, then I'll go through this quickly, starting with protective, protecting the public health and the environment, which is where it all starts. Uh, and there are strategic plans and, and there'll be more discussion of this on the Friday session. There are also state requirements that must be uh, complied with. I think of a number of calls, I'm gonna focus on three of them. One of them is the uh, new arrangements to replace Waste Services Agreement after November thirtieth two thousand and twenty-five. That date is coming up very quickly. Uh, the second among the initiatives is as part of the existing Waste Services Agreement, the town has an option to purchase the compost. Uh, and that's something we've been looking, I've talked briefly about that. And also, uh, in that uh, scheme, the, the composter, of course, being used to be most uh, useful for uh, processing organic waste. It, it raises the question of if the town is gonna purchase, how would it use the composter to process and burn solid waste and other ways to improve that process? And finally, the third, which is the option to purchase the transfer station or as an alternative to lease the site. And again, the transfer station is where our construction and demolition debris and NERD, non-recyclable, non-compostable waste that are collected separately are handled, handed, handled, transported and sent to the mainland. So it's an important piece of infrastructure that right now uh, is owned by Waste Options. And when uh, the Waste Services Agreement expires, one of the questions is what will be the future of that particular facility? Uh, we've discussed with this board before the option or the opportunity to purchase the transfer station. So I'll talk about some uh, progress there. And we can talk about other issues and answer to questions, but I'm gonna focus on those three. Next slide, please. Just very quickly, uh, aerial view of the site, the transfer station is at the bottom left. It's somewhat circled the transfer station and adjacent areas with a black line because that's where the use is associated, where they tend to be concentrated. The composter is in the center, the valve filter is retreating by air taken from the composter facility to avoid orders. And then the compost, after it's been uh, processed through the drum and then processed on the aeration floor inside for about three weeks, is then moved outside for further processing. You see that area to the left. So that's all area that the town has designated at the Matikit site for handling organic materials most of the time. You also see the, the recycling facility to the right, the landfill is above. Next slide, please. And again, just some quick pictures, uh, and you've seen this before, of what the composter looks like from various angles. Uh, and to the next slide. I'll be on the way, and this is the transfer station. Uh, part of the transfer station, as you see in the center picture on the right, are outside storage areas for a number of what we call hard-to-manage wastes, tires, appliances, scrap metal, et cetera. Uh, and so the management of those materials, which have moved off island anyway, has been associated with the transfer station. And it makes sense to lump them uh when when looking at the future use. Next slide. Okay, let's talk about the activities scheduled through December twenty-five and where we are and where we're going on the schedule. Uh, I think, I think the the point here is that in spring two thousand twenty-three, we've been actively looking as a committee, as a group, at the purchase of the composter, the transfer station, and what that means in terms of uh transitions to town where to become the owner of those facilities. Uh, because it's not just the purchase that's involved, it's also the services that the town would need to support operations and use of those facilities efficiently after its purchase. Uh, I think the consensus at this point is that the town does not want to be the operator itself with town employees of those facilities, but would prefer to have a contract operator in both cases. I think there's also question of how exactly you do that and how the scope, what the scope of services would be. Uh, will the town have its own engineer or would the town rely on engineering services, design services provided by the contract operator? Would the town do its own permitting? Would the town rely on uh the uh the contract operator to prepare and submit permits when permanent applications are needed? I think in any event, it's clear that the town, whichever way it goes, needs oversight on facilities that would, that it would own. And then the question becomes exactly how do you split up the work between the oversight, uh, which would be a town employee, and then uh the other functions, whether they're done under contract to the town or by the contract operator? So this is the level of discussion we're getting into. This would all be addressed as part of an RFP going forward. Uh, but just in terms of the timeframe, uh, uh, our manager mentioned that Article ninety-two authorizes the town to issue an RFP for a contract operator enter into more and more contracts or leases for term up to twenty-five years. Uh, again, we're at the start of going into the issues of what that would look like. We have developed detailed outline of what the RFP would look like that has been uh reviewed with Town Council and with the group. So it, that's helped us to focus in on the uh issues that I mentioned before. Uh, it makes no sense to start writing until you understand what you want to say. And in that sense, we've spent a lot of time trying to understand exactly how those issues are out. I should also say that uh last Thursday, the ownership of waste op- options came in from uh Ireland, and we had a face-to-face meeting on the island and went through a lot of these issues. What does it make sense, uh, what is the experience with uh engineering being separate? And then also as an internal group, does it make sense, what, where we, where does it make sense to draw the lines on in terms of what the town is doing directly with its employees and what the town is contributing down to the contract operator? So those discussions will continue. I think first, let's get through the town meeting to make sure that uh an RFP is something that would be authorized by town meeting, and then we can go and finish the development. It's going to take some time, probably over the summer and into the fall to do that. Uh, in terms of transition planning, it makes sense to issue the RFP probably late fall, maybe winter, but in that timeframe so that there's first of all, plenty of time for there to be respondents and to evaluate the proposals. And also second in time, once a uh advantageous proposal chosen uh to make sure that there's time for transition to the extent there needs to be if there's a change in operators, and there are a lot of issues there. For example, uh, the uh current operator has a large amount of uh rolling stock and capital equipment. If there were to be a change in operators, questions come up. Should the town buy the equipment? Should the town require the operator to buy the equipment with the existing operator want to buy? Want to sell the equipment either to the town or to the new operator? Lot of issues to work through. I think that also goes through in terms of transitions on labor, on permitting, on business, et cetera. So I think it's not just the RFP, but it's once you've chosen uh a firm, if there's a transition, how do you manage that transition? Uh, so again, just looking ahead, fall twenty twenty-four, we're implementing agreements with the contract operator. If there's a a pyramid for an engineer and permitting some part contract, we do that that time. And if there are authorizations that need to be deferred or that we come along the way, we still have town meeting in two thousand twenty-five. Uh, if necessary, with the eye on closing on the facility purchases in the fall, and it's that's the decision that made in implementing the transition. Uh, next slide. Okay, and just a quick, I mean, I mentioned status going along. I would say that I, the uh town has informed Waste Options that's subject to approval that the staff recommendation at this point is to proceed with the purchase of a composter. Uh, to put some perspective on it, it's a one million dollar option for a building that would cost much, much more than that to replace. So uh there is great value in purchasing the building and the equipment at the price. What we are also doing is looking at options at this point for exactly how to use the composter. And part of the issue here goes to the presence of PFAS in various organic materials. As uh the previous presenter mentioned, PFAS has been found in the uh feedstock that was sewage sludge feedstock to the composter. And then the composting of that material was discontinued as a result. We now have a a question of is there a way to make compost that is PFAS-free or has very, very low uh uh concentrations in it? We've done some studies that are in progress. We've seen the level, and I believe I showed this to the board in a previous presentation, that when the uh bio-salves and sludge from the wastewater stream plant was removed from the feedstock to the composter, the PFAS levels in the output dropped significantly. We've done some other uh uh studies to show that, in fact, if if paper is removed from the feedstock uh that the PFAS levels drop even more. And we have some results that on food, on compost made from pure food from which paper has been manually reviewed that show PFAS below detection. So with, there's some encouraging results there. We're still working through it exactly how to do this. But I think one other question, and this is an interaction we have to deal with, is how does PFAS figure into the waste, solid waste, in particular, organic waste that's handled and how we compost through it? In terms of the transfer station purchase, uh, I think we had a brief select board that we would be going out for an appraisal of the building. The appraisal was completed, came back at a value of two point seven million dollars. The appraisal was shown to Waste Options, they responded to the appraisal value, and we did discuss the purchase price, and there's been some communication back. Uh, the communication is ongoing. I will say that Waste Options made a counter offer and discussions are in progress. I think that's all that's appropriate to say at this point, but I think there is optimism that we can find a way to reach agreement.
George, uh, John Giorgio has his hand up. John? You're muted.
John?
Um, I just wanted to make a comment uh when George is finished with his presentation. I don't know if he is or not.
I'm close. I think I mentioned the contract or RFP that we have an outline. I think one of the issues is if you put out an RFP on Nantucket for a specialty facility, how many vendors will actually be interested? It is something we are looking into, because obviously, if you want to put something out to bid, you like multiple bidders to make the RFP competitive, ongoing work. And I mentioned issues of town oversight, the new town responsibilities, how they might be managed. I think one more, uh, and then I'll stop after saying this, is that the composter, and to a lesser extent, the transfer station are both facilities that from time to time require capital upgrades with a composter since it's processing. They're often specialty equipment suppliers that are not necessarily uh uh something that vendors that the town would deal with or that usual current uh procedures might apply. So we're also working out how best to do that and how frequently to reserve against it. Because if there are going to be, there's a need for ongoing maintenance or for that matter, for emergency funds to address uh the equipment breakage, then funds need to be available, and that's a situation that needs to be addressed without waiting for the next town meeting. So the town needs to be prepared for those situations, and that's all part of being an owner of a facility that has equipment that might need replacement. I'll stop there, and John, you want to continue?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chair, one, one um comment that I would like to make is, um, are are folks in town thinking, why are we seeking authorization for a long-term contract at uh this upcoming annual town meeting? And um, it it's my recommendation that you obtain the necessary legislative authorization through town meeting before you issue the RFP. Um, i- in the hopes that vendors will or potential vendors will be assured that 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 town meeting has authorized the RFP to be issued and a long-term contract. Um, that will maximize, in in my experience, the potential for getting um a number of competitive uh bids, as opposed to a situation where if you issue the RFP, there is no town meeting authorization in place. Are vendors um likely to proceed through the time and expense of preparing a proposal when that legislative authorization uh is not um is not in place? Um, there's also a provision in the general laws that allows for um in particular on Nantucket, innovative um technologies. Uh, but that requires a finding by town meeting that that's in the public interest, and that is included in Article ninety-two. So that's the reason why we are recommending that Article ninety-two be passed at this town meeting so that we can then proceed to the next step, which is issuance of the RFP, which will state that town meeting has already authorized a new contract.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
George, do you have anything else?
I think I, I think that's in a snapshot where we are. We're happy to take questions on any of the aspects, but again, you know, we've, this is a, uh, next slide was something that was shown to the, and we talked through at our working session early in the spring. So, uh, and this is just the wording of the option so that people will see what it is and what uh would be buying, should that option be exercised.
Thank you, George. Um, Brooke, Matt, board, any questions? Brooke, you're on this.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I've, I've been in this work group and uh attended um a number of meetings on this, and it's, it's been an evolution of our discussing the the many possibilities, permutations, and ways that this next round of a contract can be put together. And I think we've really come a long way um in looking at the different variables and, and the thing that surprised me the most now that I'm in this is the evolution of waste management, uh waste stream management in particular. Um, the, the impact of PFAS and the, and the cost of offshoring our trash escalating dramatically. And so the idea that we may be able to introduce some new technologies um to keep processing and dealing with trash locally and that we're producing compost that's clean and can be reused um on island. And so that creating a circle of key of of, in a very safe and clean way, um, processing as much of our trash here and keeping it here to avoid transportation costs that are escalating, both in terms of the getting it from here to there and then what it costs to have someone take it when it gets there. And those costs are escalating dramatically. So that's all part of the picture of trying to figure out what package to put together and how we, we will be managing our waste for the next twenty-five years. Um, and it's constantly evolving, so creating a contract that allows adaptation over time as technologies improve. And um, and then the other piece that I think is really important for the public to understand that compliance, the ability to comply, to understand how we, how we want each of us to sort our waste and bring it to where we process it at our landfill um is challenging. Um, it's challenging for people who live here twelve months of the year. It's, it's challenging for people who visit from all over the world where waste management differs dramatically from community to community, country to country. And so that's really been part of our thinking, too, is how do we create a system that's, that makes compliance relatively easy as well as um the cost? And um, so those are some of the factors that we're considering in all of this, but a lot of work has gone into this, and I think we're, we've come a long way. And I think we're poised to do this really in a timely manner with support at town meeting on Article ninety-two um and to really make a successful and uh transition at the, uh, in December of two thousand twenty-five. Appreciate everybody on the team's work.
Thanks, Brooke.
Yeah, I guess for Brooke or for uh somebody, uh, one, well, uh, one question, first one. So, so we, do we know how we want to run it for the next five or ten years right now? Like, we had a request for uh information. It wasn't a request for a proposal, it was informational, and we got, I don't know, twenty-one different packets. And I read through them, and they, the breadth of the differences was pretty impressive. They were all across the board. And so have we sorted out which of those is the most, uh, you know, most likely we're pointing our RFP to? Uh, what's, you know, what is the strategy?
Are you talking about technologies?
Well, they, some of them had different technologies, some were going to do all of it, some were going to do, you know, uh, gasification, some were going to do other, other things. It were all different uh manners of, you know, sort of how we would do it. And so, you know, so have we sorted through those and have and picked one? You know, this could be you or for George, you know?
I I'm going to punt this to George because there are, there are some potential pilots that will help inform us. But for me, the most important thing is in the next contract to have flexibility that as technology changes, that we can shift to a different technology that becomes available within that twenty-five year and period, and we're not locked in. Does it mean we have to change something in December of two thousand twenty-five? Probably not right away, but to leave room for the addition of new technologies going forward, I think is critical. And I'll punt to George to correct me or follow up.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so first of all, I, uh, is, I meant, it's a very important question, and and I think uh, one of the things we've been focusing, I think the answer is that we've narrowed our focus to a handful of paths. And you're right, with the, our first of the RFP, I was open up to the world and and see the whole spectrum of opportunities. And uh, I think we're focused on, focusing on a couple of initiatives that might be specific to Nantucket, make uh uh very important uh contributions. One of them is the potential, and we're still working through this, but I'll put it out as a seed that's, that we're going to be follow-up as it grows, which is the potential to collect food waste separately from other household MSW. Uh, if you want compost and you want to minimize PFAS, it may well be that collecting food waste separately from other materials is the way to go. Uh, and then you would couple that with initiative to recycle the paper rather than compost the paper, because it, it seems that s- some of the origin of the PFAS that ends up or has ended up in compost has been from paper. And if you could remove that paper, the uh, the remainder would uh, would, would, you're really, I should say, you would reduce the PFAS level in the remainder quite substantially. And that's quite promising. Uh, and to do that, you know, every one of these strategies, you know, the collection means a whole collection, infrastructure, and it means maybe some new equipment F at the recycling center, similarly with paper recycling. So we're, so everything is integrated here. Uh, so I think those are two initiatives. The third is a, we have been keeping our eye very carefully on technology. And in particular, there's, there's been a lot of talk of gasification and pyrolysis. In the last two years, we've seen uh entrance into commercial operation of the first few small-scale pyrolysis and gasification facilities in the United States that are handing, handling plastics and what I would call NERNIC-like material. So we're starting to see that what was just a concept in two thousand twenty-one is starting to become more of a reality in two thousand twenty-three. Uh, I don't know that Nantucket necessarily wants to try out an unproven technology, but as these technologies are starting to become more proven and go through more generations, it's becoming more interesting. And it's clear that we have to set up the RFP in a way that if a technology uh must needs to be added to the mix, so it would be beneficial for the town to do so, that it can do so, the town would probably be the owner of it and have an appropriate The town would probably be the owner of it and have appropriate uh, contractual arrangements in place to implement when it's ready to do so. And so I should say, in that case, the town has already sent some of its plastic out uh, for testing at a gasification facility in Massachusetts. The test went well. We're about to, you know, I understand in June, take this up to a next level and literally send bales of mer residuals, uh, bales of compost residuals, perhaps some material executed from landfill and I think a sample of Nernic, each of the four out to a facility uh, to see if it can be converted by gasification to number two heating oil. And uh, we have a test report on this by the end of the summer. This could be very interesting development to integrate into the uh, RFP process as, as part of the plan. Because again, you take the Nernics and the plastics out of the other materials and process them on the Nantucket into a useful product with the technology that's proven and we know how it performs. We know what the uh, management is. It's not incineration or combustion with emissions, but rather it's a conversion technology where uh, uh, without the typical air emissions of, of combustion or incineration facility. Uh, that could be a quite attractive option. And these are also, we're looking to make sure the scale is appropriate. Because we don't want a facility that's too big for Nantucket. It has to be small. It has to be in a modular system that's consistent with what the island uh, generates in terms of those materials. Uh, so I mean, there are a number of things. I think those are the three of the uh, focus points looking forward. I, I hope I've answered your question.
Thank you, George. John, Georgia?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Matt, I, I wanted to um, drill down a little bit more on your question. You know, I think the, the, the um, team that's been working on this, and I believe we've presented this to the board before, is that our recommendation is that you look at a different model for how you manage a contract operator at the site. Um, where um, some of the problems that have been associated with the current contract was the fact that the um, the operator was responsible for making capital improvements at the site. And they, you know, incurred quite a bit of debt. And that, I think, constrained the ability of the town to have flexibility going forward in terms of um, you know, how, how the, how the operator um, uh, would manage that debt and provided those um, capital improvements. So we're looking at a model now where the town would essentially own all of the facilities, the composter, the transfer station, and we would be looking more and, and the town would be responsible for using its own um, borrowing authority to make capital improvements at the site. We will control that. Um, those projects in a much better fashion. Um, and uh, we think it can be done in a way that gives the town a lot of flexibility, you know? The Article ninety-two calls for a twenty-five-year agreement or an agreement up to twenty-five years, which is your current agreement. And one of the reasons why the, the current agreement was so long was so that the um, the operator could amortize their debt over a long period of time. We will likely not enter, not recommend entering into a new twenty-five-year agreement. Um, it would, we want the authorization from town meeting, so we can structure the RFP in a way where it might be for five or ten years is the initial term with options to renew if everything is going well. But the town is going to take on the responsibility for um, as I said, for making all the capital improvements. Uh, and um, you will, by that time, of course, have a solid waste manager uh, uh, full-time who will be able to manage this contract as well as identify what the needs for the, for the facilities are and be able to plan for those projects going forward.
Thank you, John.
You know, yeah, a couple of comments. I, I think that sounds great. I think that the incentives, as, as we said, we need some flexibility. The incentives have not been aligned properly at times over the last twenty-five years. So we were, you know, we weren't able to do certain things that would have saved us money or made us money. And we weren't even setting the charges on some of the, these things that waste options was allowed to do that, which one year cost us millions of dollars. So I think that this will, you know, this could be, this is good that we're thinking this way. Uh, the separating the food is, is another one that's, you know, Rita and I were advocating for that ten years ago. I think that's, you know, and knowing that it works and takes the PFAS out of the equation, we may all have to have green buckets or something that we put waste into. It happens in other parts of the world, even in the U.S. And I think that that is a, you know, a positive step that is, that should be understandable. I think we have to work with the haulers so they can set up themselves to handle this. You know, and then that, and that has to be started as soon as we kind of know where we're going, that has to be started. Uh, it's really good to hear about the tests going on, you know, hearing that we're sending these tests off. One of my biggest things, and I'm glad to hear we're taking it out of the uh, landfill itself because this landfill is in a storm tide pathway. It's in a, you know, it's not going to happen in my lifetime, but in my kid's lifetime, we're going to be, what are we going to do? Hard armor the place? So if we could size, you know, a, you know, whatever it is, gasification or whatever type of thing we end, end up with there. And it is able to, we can use something that is able to handle the uh, residuals that are in the ground already over time and able to handle it with a fair amount of dirt on top because a lot of this was mixing in with a, a bit extra dirt at times I've been hearing. And so if we can handle that effectively, that would be uh, amazing. Because that would allow us to do that. I had one question on, there was a in you, George, in yours, uh, number two of, it's on page of our packet. It's page thirty-six of forty-four. And it was, uh, it says, uh, I understand purchase compost to continue improved processing organic. I get that. It says purchase transfer station or lease site to handle, send C and D waste. So we, are we thinking of, we're going to buy the transfer station? Are we going to lease it to somebody else? Are we thinking of leasing a site somewhere else?
Okay, now, uh, okay, uh, forgive me for not being as clear as I might be. I think there are a couple of considerations where we're going from this off. You know, as you know, the Way Services Agreement doesn't include a specific option for purchasing the transfer station. So there are two questions. What if you can't reach agreement with waste options on a purchase? And what alternatives are if the town doesn't want to spend the money for capital purchase or if the number turns out to be very large? And I think the alternative there is uh, to actually instead of buying the actual structure, the town owns the land, the town could choose if it wanted to, to essentially subdivide the existing property uh, and lease out the parcel on which the transfer station was built competitively. Uh, and then uh, as, as the uh, owner, the town could put all sorts of restrictions on how that transfer station is used and what it is used for, require the difficult to manage wastes be handled by whoever the less he is, et cetera, you know, and, 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 and essentially get too close to the same place as if the town were owner. The advantage of ownership is that the town clearly uh, has control over any residual value of the facility or for some reason uh, it needs to repurpose the asset. The town has the ability to do that, whereas if it's not the owner and you get to the end of the term, you, you have to go through the same exercise of buying it. This way the town gets past that upfront. Uh, so that was the question is, if for some reason either purchase would be very expensive or more than the town wants to spend, is there an alternative that gets the town nearly equivalent control through leasing? I think the answer is you can almost get there, but there will always be advantages of ownership. And I think at this point, so we've gone through the, and again, I'm not going to talk a lot about this, but you know, I think we're optimistic that the purchase uh, arrangement, if it's authorized, can be closed.
And, and one other question is, in, in baked into this, is there the uh, flexibility that we will potentially be moving from that location in the next twenty-five to fifty years? And are we going to size the equipment to, to be moved, et cetera? I think that's important because, you know, it would be ideal to have it closer to our uh, you know, sort of closer to Mid Island, closer to, you know, sort of the airport where we have, uh, there's a lot of uh, you know, and not be driving down the Maticat Road. Especially, you know, some of that's in storm time pathways too. You know, is there some, i- is that part of the planning process that the long-term, this should not be where it is? You know, and is that being a consideration?
Well, I think if the town owners it, I think that goes exactly to the point. If the town is the owner of all the facilities and the parcels, then the town can uh, manage uh, their redeployment of those resources. I think one of the things we're looking at for the, if there is a gasification technology, is, is it a modular type technology? How mobile is the equipment per se? I think, so it is something that's part of the general consideration that if the town is the owner of the facilities, the town has options. That would be much more complicated and difficult to tell we're not the owner.
Yeah. And my final, then that, then that would be great. I think that that should be the plan and we should make sure we've set aside however many acres we need for that before we give it to anybody else. Because it's, this is going to be, you know, the prudent thing to do over our, you know, my kid's lifetime is to get this to the, to the right place, to high ground, into the right place with the right systems. And I'm glad that we are working on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Good questions. Can we go to public, Mr. Mandel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to compliment the presentations and Mr. Giorgio's input. Uh, and the work of the uh, work group that I understand is comprised of town staff. I wish there was some opportunity for uh, outside input into a work group, but be that as it may. Uh, I was very pleased to hear Mr. Giorgio's explanation about Mass General Law allowing for some innovative technologies. You know, we've been particularly interested in uh, small modular gasification and aerobic digestion and some might differ with the statement that these are unproven technologies. Uh, these technologies have been ongoing around the world for probably more than a decade. But uh, be that as it may, uh, the, the path that we're going to go down, uh, is it possible to put up Mr. George, Mr. Aronson slide page six with the activities scheduled through December two thousand twenty-five, just for a moment?
Yeah, that's, I think that's fine.
Thank you. Um, I don't, I can't see it where I'm at. Oh, there we go. Hold on. There we go. Thank you. Uh, there's a lot to be done here. A lot to get done and a lot of moving parts to address this program by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. That's less than nineteen months. So there's a lot of activity that has to be taken place successfully. Um, this activity schedule I guess puts us on a a step-by-step path that at some point in time may be difficult to abort if we find a difficulty with it. Uh, the concept to have the town own all these and purchase and own these facilities, the transfer station, the compost area, the MRF and the drop-off, uh, all that equipment. There's, there's over thirty major pieces of movable equipment out there that have to be maintained. Uh, and, and some of my concerns are that uh, this path that we're embarking on, uh, it could create costs and additional overhead that the town would be creating to manage the takeover of the facilities. But what I'm not hearing discussed, and it might be interesting to discuss it, is that at this time the risks for the operational and maintenance, maintenance issues of the entire process and the facilities is on the operator now waste options. If the town goes through this path work that's outlined here, going through three different town meetings to get authorizations and spending, the town is going to be assuming all of the risk now that is currently being uh, absorbed and undertaken by wa- waste options. So I would just caution that that aspect of this program uh, deserves a, a bit of transparency and discussion and prudent thought. Uh, transferring of risk uh, is, is a dangerous thing for a town. We, we've got to hire people to, 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 to manage this place, to maintain the vehicles, either either new hires, if we can get them or contracted hires and, and paying them. So uh, there's a lot of moving parts here to take care of in less than nineteen months. And uh, it's an ambitious program. I wish it's long because it's very important.
Thank you, Bruce. George or does anyone want to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, thank you, Bruce. I think, you know, first of all, I completely agree with you that any transfer of risk requires a lot of prudent thought and there are a lot of moving parts here. There's a lot of equipment and as you mentioned, it's true, there's a lot of mobile equipment at the landfill. One of the questions that is before the committee we discuss is, doesn't make sense for the town to own the mobile equipment? Or is that something that you would leave with the contract operator? Let the private entity do that level of maintenance? Let the private entity uh, run the staff to do it. Uh, and then the, the town would get involved in the oversight role rather than a direct uh, operation roles of equipment and, and staffing labor. Uh, and, and again, that is precisely what we're in the middle of as we go through designing an RFP process. And I, and I share your concern that it is a lot. And where do you draw the lines? Uh, I might disagree with you that all the risks with waste options uh, under the Way Services Agreement, what we've seen is in fact that, that agreement has found many of those risks passed on to the town in any event. And one of the uh, advantages of ownership is that the town has more control over risks that end up with it anyway. And so I think, you know, an example would be, well, you know, for example, uh, I don't know, there are any number of examples, but I think, I, but I did, I do, I fundamentally share the concern that yes, risk allocation has to be managed carefully. Who's doing what? What's oversight? What's direct service? What do you allocate to others to do and then uh, pull them to standards on how they do it? And what does the town do directly? And I think that's at the heart of a lot of these questions. Managing labor, managing equipment, managing operations, managing capital as well.
Thank you, George. Uh, Brooke, do you want to chime in?
No, I think George answered it. That, that is a lot of what we're talking about is, is the risk reward of, of, you know, um, which is why I think as a group, we rejected the idea that the town was going to run the landfill and be responsible for all employees and hiring and all, and maintenance and all of that. So I think that that's why we're going the direction of an RFP for a contract operator so that they are responsible for those day-to-day details in terms of labor, et cetera, and maintenance.
Thank you. We go to Mary Longacre. And we're going to wrap this up for A soon as we have B and C also to get to.
Uh, thank you, Mary Longacre. Um, I wanted to uh, just remind everybody that reducing the amount of waste that we generate makes this whole process a tiny bit easier and cheaper. Um, whether that's looking at our demolition practices or encouraging home composting or continuing to look at packaging as an issue or, or many other options for reducing the waste that we generate. I hope that uh, when we are able to fill the solid waste coordinator and the recycling coordinator positions that that will be a priority for them as a parallel effort to everything that we're doing here. Um, also my two cents, I would say, yes, the town needs to own the facility. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Great point. And that's going to be a big part of uh, of all the going forward. Uh, is, are we okay moving to the?
Uh, let me just one, one quick comment. I, I just want, if I can, and then we can move on. Is I think that Bruce has brought up a really important point. And I think, you know, it's easy to say, okay, we'll own it and we'll contract it. But if we contract, but if we contracted and they've got a ten-year, fifteen-year and they get out here and they can't find employees and they, you know, it doesn't work, they'll, they'll drop it. It's going to be back in our lap. It still has to be done. And so in what, one of the things that's a negative, we've been tied to waste options. One of the positives that they owed so much and they, you know, they had to do it. They had to continue it because they had loans to a certain date. And so they had sort of a, you know, they, they had a vested interest to stay operating, which someone else may not. Depending, so we have to think of how it's done. And I would think we'd want to really think it's, it's Depending, so we have to think of how it's done. And I would think we want to really think it's it's. It's not gonna be like it's been for the last twenty five years. Over the next twenty five, operationally. It is getting, as we all know, the town knows, it's getting very much different to do that here. So I think that, you know, we have to, we we might think that we don't won't have the responsibility if we write it a certain way. But we have to make sure we that we think about it's gonna come back to us anyway. So how do we? You know, and we we need some smarter people in human resources and, you know, big business than me to look at this, because I think. That's a real issue. So anyway.
Okay, George, can we go to the overview of compost product?
So this is, this is not me, this is, I believe, uh someone else.
Sorry.
We have JP Karen here from Waste Options. He gave uh the group that George mentioned earlier in the meeting we had with Waste Options last week. Um an overview of some quality improvements that have been made to the compost product, and he's gonna take us through a brief presentation on it.
Thanks for your patience, JP.
Yep, no problem. Uh, good evening and thank you, everybody, for allowing me to be here to present this to present this to you tonight. Um, what you see in front of you is a is gonna be a brief slide. Uh, that is the flow diagram for the leaf and yard waste material that we currently are taking at our facility. Um, over probably. I'd say the last two and a half years, we've really drilled down into this product. Um. Cleaning it up, making it a very, very beautiful looking aesthetic looking product, but also for. Foremost important, a very clean product. Uh, we've been able to remove all the tap contaminations. It used to be riddled with glass, plastic. Uh anything and everything that came through the composting stream, people throwing things into the glass pile, grass pile, just uh. Kind of getting pushed up and pushed in, not really being manicured very well. Um, so I'd like to go over the flow with you. As you can see in the beginning, the leaf and yard waste comes in. We mix it right at the beginning of the uh front of the pile with wood chips. At that point, it's kick sorted. That's where the glass is picked out of it, the plastic bags that are left, any rejects, those all go into the Nernic stream. Then it's pushed into the pile. Uh, it's added air, the bulk, uh, excuse me. The wood chips are added for porosity and bulking of the chip so that the air is allowed to flow through it. Then in the process, the windrows are turned. Before they're turned, they uh have to meet PFRP. PFRP is the process to further reduce pathogens. At that point, that is where the weed seed is cooked off. That is where the fecal, E. coli, Salmonella are all killed and neutralized. But also at that point, that is also where the good buggies, um like microbes are allowed to manifest inside. And start digesting these, um, the carbon, the nitrogen, eating it up. And creating your product essentially. As it goes through the process, it's turned about three to four times. Depending upon how fast and how vigorous it meets that temperature. Then it goes to a vibratory screen. The overs are screened and recycled back in. We have had. Um, the public coming to us, asking us for mulch again. Inside of those screened overs, I'm able to remove a fraction of wood, completely clean. Inoculated with good microbes for the garden um that goes down as a dye free coarse mulch. Um, looks good. Again, there's no glass. It's very clean. And it adds uh water retention to to your brushes and and to. To all the brushlings that are around the garden and stuff like that around the house. After that, the screened overs go into a curing pile. Once it hits the curing stage, we then sample it. We sample it under the USCC. Um standardized testing, which covers a broad vast of. Your TNN, your um carbon to nitrogen ratios, your NPK, your pH, your soil solubilities. Your EC, all the way down the line. Um, it actually tested very well. Through that, you can see that. It takes about six to eight months to cure. If anybody was around for my presentation at the Waste Summit. Compost is very much like wine. The longer it sits, the better it gets. Um, the more. You use it, the more you guys, the more I hope you guys use it, the more comfortable you guys will become with it. And with us out there creating this product. Um, if you could slide down. These are the products that currently go in our Omri listed uh compost. That's grass and leaves on the left, and that's wood chips on the right. Those are the only two things that go in there. Um, go ahead, you can scroll down. As you can see, I use pretty much the whole pad for our advantage. Row number one is closest to the red truck. Row number five is all the way on the other end. As row number five becomes mature and the temperatures reduce. That goes to the screen, then number four becomes number five, number three becomes number four. And vice versa, all the way back down to the base pile and breaking the base pile back down further and further and further. Scroll um next. As you can see from these two pictures, um, these are. The the picture on the left is a uh a probe that we use for being able to check the internal temperature of a compost winrow. In order for that. Weed seed sterilization that you see there, it has to be above one hundred and thirty one degrees for a minimum of three days per lot. Inside of that, the FDA recognizes that fecal, uh Salmonella and E. coli are all. Killed off and neutralized over a fifteen day period. So you, excuse me, I just backwards that up. Let me start over. The windrows created, PFRP is met within three days. It has to hit fifteen days of that PFRP. So that would as assimilate the five rows that we have out there. In each one of the five rows, it's hitting PFRP at each phase. That's what I meant to say, excuse me. So then you see the machine to the right, that is the machine responsible for screening the product. Uh, inside of that, there's three cuts. The the fine cut is what goes to product. The middle cut is that coarse dyed mulch material, which ultimately gets reintroduced for further breakdown and then the overs. Which again are mainly a wood fraction, maybe a little bit of compost leftover to go back into reintroduction. There is nothing from this product. That goes into the landfill. Um, next slide, please. Pile on the uh pile on the left is the finished compost pile on the right is that di- uh dye free coarse mulch that we were just discussing. Next slide, please. So the beneficials of use, you can reduce the fertilizer that we're already using on the island. Uh, we already know that these fertilizers are causing wreaking havoc on our our waterways, our fish, our shellfish. Right down the road. It can provide adequate structure for these sandy soils that don't have very much nutrient in them. It's free to residents in the front, the bin pickup. Or we do a bulk charge for use of the loader. It fits the three Rs, reduce, reuse, and recycle. It's also safer and a more sustainable product than any conventional fertilizer on the market. It's Omri listed. It's used for organic farming and growing. Um, for anybody here that doesn't know what Omri is, Omri is an organic certification now worldwide, no longer just nationwide. They've moved into a very big market for um products used on organic farming. And also any type of organic product to be made out of it. If you have a cow. Everything around that cow, if he's gonna be organic, has to be organic. That's the grass that grows around him, the soil that's underneath his feet. And the everything that he's eating. Um, we very much fit into to all of this. So we feel that it's not only Omri listed, but we're able to manufacture a natural far more superior than any. Materials that are used on island today. Some of the changes in our products are noticeable just by driving around the site, but most significant changes are, as we discussed, with the consistency and product contamination. There are no MSW or bio-solids used in or around these products. We take great measures in ensuring product quality by following the USCC, which is the US Composting Council standards. Which they set forth um on regulating these products. Our products have gone through extensive testing and meet all standards to show great potential for creating other products. In closing, I thank you for the opportunity to present this to you all tonight. Our feeling is that these products are something to be proud of. We stand behind them and I hope you will stand with me too.
Thank you, JP.
Which leads to JP's next request.
So my final request is, I stand before you tonight asking. Um, pleading that we be allowed to use your town seal, the town seal. On our bags for marketing purposes, considering that we are already co-composting joint in the product already.
So, oh, go ahead. So. I'm I'm beyond excited about the change in this. Um, I know that um. Um, people close to me uh who are in the business have um. Had their doubts about this product. Um, there have been issues and acknowledged issues, particularly around the screening of. Um, glass and plastic and so forth. And I brought a bag, JP brought a bag and I took it home to my husband, who is a. An avid lifelong gardener and he was impressed. The only thing he asked me is what's the what's the nitrogen content? He doesn't want to overload the garden with nitrogen. And so JP answered that question right away for me. It's one zero zero. Um, so uh I'm I'm delighted. The thing that is really cool, there's so many things about this that are cool. Um, they've bought a bagging uh machine so that they can bag and sell this product retail. And the idea for me of no longer, potentially no longer. Trucking over thousands of bags of compost to be sold locally, that we are we're creating a circle of. Um, of material that that starts and ends on Nantucket and is is beneficial to our environment. And also maybe opens up some truck space on the ferry because it's being produced here. Um, I'm. Uh, I'm really thrilled and I have some family members I have to convince, but um I'm convinced, so. It's gonna go in our garden in my house.
Brooke. Anyone else? Uh, as as I'm listening to this, I just, I I wish Rita could or hope she she watches this, because she brought this to our attention. Three, four, or five years ago, the same concerns you have, and now to see it. You know, a lot of time has been put towards this to fi- to figure it out. I think it's great. The three Rs, like it's all really been thought out.
Um, any, what about Japanese knotweed? Is that located in any of this material?
Negative.
Okay.
That's also would be cooked up.
Excuse me, I just gotta say, it's been quite an evolution, because there was a while ago, I was a. A critic of the whole process and uh I congratulate you. Good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I yeah, I'll say the same thing. I'm I'm still picking glass out from twenty years ago, but I'm I'm near the end. But but I think this is amazing and and I think it's uh. You know, it's sort of what, you know, exactly what you said about Rita. It's what she she talked about. And I and the other thing that's really interesting to me is we spend millions of dollars for that big machine. And this is all laid out and nature does it by itself. You know, it's it's sort of, it's. It sort of, it sort of makes me think, well, you know, like when we first put the machine in, I remember being told. Oh, no, we won't have to sort anything. It'll just go through and, you know, it'll come off and all this stuff and you're looking and that was the one of the sales pitches and you look now. And it's, you know, this, we're going the right, we're doing it, we're in the right way, which is great.
Go ahead.
Well, well, I'm prepared to make a motion to authorize uh waste options to use the town seal on their packaging for this product.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye, that passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we good to move on, board? All right. Any select word reports and comments? Many reports, Brooke?
Yeah, um, I'd like to report out that um Libby and I and um Tucker and I'm trying to think who else, a number of people were invited to. Um, Housing Nantucket's Housing Summit, and it was a really large group um of diverse. Um, participants in housing, developers, uh, Hal Keen was there, Richmond, Great Point was represented. Conservation organizations, um, uh Beth Hallett from the school district, it was a, it was. Housing Nantucket did an incredible job of bringing together, they were probably fifty or so attendees and it was by invitation only. And really, it was about identifying the problems. Um, uh, brainstorming solutions and then prioritizing the 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 areas of focus in terms of solutions. Um, and uh, some of the things that were talked about were uh collaborations between conservation and housing. Um, the the um doing more data analysis and collection of uh both the supply of of existing housing. Um, who's supplying it, you know, how people are living as well as the demand. For for housing and unmet demand for housing in order to drive policymaking in terms of um. What we do going forward at the Affordable Housing Trust in particular and across the community. Um. And um, um, I'm trying to think, Tucker, help me with what other um initiatives. Anyway, it was, it was a great. Um collaborative environment and there are some groups that have come together that will. Take some initiatives forward and 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 we'll be meeting again in six months and and to me. Um, the next step is then even greater concentric circle of public input into the process, but. Kudos to Housing Nantucket for finding the funding, arranging for leadership and and coordinating um this event. It was really incredible.
Thank you, Brooke. Anything else?
Uh, Coastal Resiliency is meeting on Tuesday and we're doing a field trip. And the group is gonna go to uh. To Wisconsin and walk from Wisconsin town all the way out to the lighthouse in view sort of what. The the challenges are there and we're not gonna talk, we're not allowed to talk about it. You know, we can talk about it when we come back and in in future meetings. But it's uh, you know, it's like coming back to middle school.
Thank you, Matt. Don, Malcolm, anything? Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask, uh, I forgot to thank George for his presentation, George Anderson. We, I moved on to uh too quick, we got excited. Yeah, thank you, George, for all the work you're doing. Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes. Thank you all.
We're going out to Wisconsin. That was like, you know.